Motion for the consideration of bills.
Yes, I would move for the consideration of bills to be paid in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. Alon credit card in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Manual checks in the amount of one hundred dollars. Payroll liabilities for September fifth, twenty fourteen, in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand, seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents. For a total of four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions on the bills?
Uh, I have a question on Dave's asphalt and, uh, one engineering, uh...
McDonald.
Uh, six burns in McDonald Engineering Company for fifty-nine thousand, five oh five. It just says Wat- Riverton Water Supply and I'm wondering if it's a, uh, um, a study or a part.
On page three.
Your honor, uh, since Kyle isn't here, I believe it is on the, uh, design for the booster pump station. And it looks like this might be the final payment.
Okay. So is that like the retainage, how that works?
Pardon?
Well, that would be like the retainage being?
Yes.
Okay.
And what about the, uh, Dave's asphalt, is that the... His final on August River Walk project?
You're right. Your honor, we have to advertise that for forty-five days before we can release the final payment, just in case there's anything outstanding, and so we ask for authorization now, however, it won't be paid until the twentieth of September.
Okay, thank you.
Your honor, to follow up on that one real quick, um, I thought that that work was born off construction, am I wrong about that? Was it, was it Dave's asphalt that got that bid? Oh, I don't know why I thought that was born off, okay. Um, the question I have is, in the Alon credit card, there was a payment to the Albany Area Chamber of Commerce. I was just wondering what that would be for.
Kristin, I don't have the Alon credit card.
Um, it's the second to last page of the packet. Under Kerry T. Smith's card it says... I just thought it was odd.
Your honor, if I can have some time to look at that and I'll, I'll get back with you and, and let you know. I do know that we were discussing that just the other day, trying to figure out what it was for. Um, and nobody had a really good answer of what they could remember what exactly that was for.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
That was it for me.
All right, all those in favor of the approval of claims say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Is there any other business for us today?
I don't believe so, your honor.
All right, meeting adjourned.
I now call the September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would council member, um, Christianson lead us into place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Councilman Rich Gard.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christianson.
Present.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Mayor Ron Wartness.
And I am present. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to excuse council member Canaan from the meeting tonight.
Your honor, I'd move to excuse, uh, Councilman Canaan.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I declare that we have a quorum present this evening. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda, moving agenda item number sixteen, uh, after agenda item number seven.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda with, uh, movement of sixteen, uh, underneath, uh, item seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number six, communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Okay. Agenda item number seven is, uh, staff response to citizens' previous comments. Are there any thing to report?
Not at this time, your honor.
Okay. I was confused as who's the city administrator position there for a moment.
Ditto.
Okay. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of litigation, uh, considering litigation to which our governing body is or may be a party in accordance with Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, A I I I.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. I would like to invite the city attorney, Mr. Solers, public works director, Kyle Butterfield, and utility division manager, Don Wilhelm, to executive session, please.
Mayor?
We convene. Point of order, we need to reconvene, your honor.
Okay, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Is, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to, um, um... Take the issue at hand into executive session after this meeting, uh, for resolution.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to reconvene after we've taken care of the public work later this evening.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, agenda item number eight is the consent agenda, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes, September tw- second, two thousand and fourteen, regular council meeting, approval of the minute, September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, council work session, approval of the minute, September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, finance committee meeting, approval of finance committee recommendations for September fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, and, uh, resolution number thirteen zero four, establishing a beautification committee.
Your honor.
Yes.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. Elen credit card in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Manual checks in the amount of one hundred dollars, checks written for payroll liabilities for September fifth, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand, seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents. For a total of four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. And also at this time, the chief has an answer to a question that was posed at our meeting yesterday about a bill on the finance committee.
Okay.
Thank you, your honor, this, uh, the issue that came up at the meeting, I'm sorry, I wasn't present for that meeting, and, and the captain who was there didn't know the answer, but I wanted to get on the record because the finance committee asked that question. There was a bill to the Albany County Chamber of Commerce in Oregon that came in on a police department credit card, a- and the issue, they just transposed the number, so the name that they were trying to bill was not us, but they just transposed the number, which turned out to be one of our cards. And so when we called them to find out why that bill was made, they reimbursed us that money, so, um, in the receipts there also is the reimbursement receipt showing that, that money was taken, but then they, they put it back in the account, so, it, it wasn't anything we purchased.
Okay. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Your honor, I'd make a motion to accept the consent, the ex- the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Okay, agenda item number nine is the Pfister subdivision replat, community development director's report, please.
Yes, your honor, the Pfister subdivision is, uh, a subdivision that's located outside of the city limits, southeast of Rain Tree Estates subdivision. Since it's within the mile, uh, of the city, it is looked at, the county has us look at it also. This county subdivision was originally reviewed in March of twenty thirteen. Uh, the petitioner would now like to re-subdivide the existing two lots. And they would like to move the lot line to make Lot One A larger and divide Lot Two into four individual lots. The county has advised the surveyor to name this plat, the Pfister subdivision replat, uh, to which the planning commission concurred. Uh, utility irrigation and drainage movements are on the sides of each lot, and between the lots, a private road will give access to the four lots being created in the existing Lot Two. Lot One A is access from West Mountain Drive, West Mountain View Drive, and reviews were sent to utility companies with no conflicts received. The planning commission did review this plat on September eleventh. They recommended it for approval with the change to the title of this replat, a change to the road name to be Sandstone Circle. There was another, um, road named similar to what they were going to name it. Uh, they also had a change to some water right information on the plat. And, uh, also with a concern that they wanted to give to the county commissioners about access from Lot One A from a legal standing. Other than that, they did approve the plat, and there is no immediate budget impact resulting from this staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the Pfister subdivision replat?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number ten, uh, Forest Pure Gas Overlay Project recommendation, public works director report, please.
Thank you, your honor. At the August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, Forest meeting, the committee asked city staff to put together plans to repair the shoulder and overlay Pure Gas Road. On August nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the city council unanimously approved the recommendation to advertise the Forest Pure Gas Overlay Project for construction. The Forest project was advertised for bid on August twenty-fourth and thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Two contractors and suppliers signed up and downloaded the bid package. Bids were received and opened on September ninth, two thousand and fourteen, with the following results. Dave's Asphalt Incorporated from Riverton, Wyoming, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Seventy-one Construction Incorporated from Riverton, Wyoming, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. Staff reviewed the bid results, uh, to assure the bids were responsive. Staff recommends to the city council to award the bid to Dave's Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. The original estimate for this car, for this project was roughly one hundred thousand dollars. Regarding budget impacts, um, this project will be funded out of the additional one percent fund. Currently, the one percent fund has one million, eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Based on current contract commitments, the remaining balance available for projects in this fund is six hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the, uh, Pure Gas Overlay Project?
Your honor. Move the Forest Pure Gas Overlay Project recommendation?
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second, it, uh, is there discussion?
Your honor.
Councilman Gard.
Are we assuming that this is gonna be done in this weather, this fall season?
Your honor, that is correct.
And is that, um, is that what the bid, the documents read, is it was to be completed in calendar two thousand and fourteen?
Your honor, yes, it was scheduled and bid to be completed this construction season, two thousand and fourteen.
Any other comments? We've got a motion and a second on the overlay project, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Your honor, I still have some questions. The scheduling, is, is Dave's asphalt aware, has they given us any idea that it's, the timeline is too tight to get the work done? Has there been any complaint of that nature?
Your honor, there has been no complaint from Dave's asphalt regarding the timeframe to complete this project, um, per industry standards and project specs.
How quickly would the documents, bid documents, construction documents be ready to go? How quickly could they start work?
I would ha- your honor, I would have to coordinate with the contractor, obviously, they are waiting for the city to approve and make a notice of award to them. And so, um, we can definitely coordinate, um, after council action, then ensure that we, um, provide the notice of award, and then coordinate, um, schedules with the contractor.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Uh, agenda item number eleven, discussion of city-owned parking lot, uh, chief police report, please.
Thank you, your honor, uh, this has come up several times, a discussion about the parking lot that's at Broadway and East Fremont. Um, a- and I guess what we're looking for as the city staff is what direction the council would like to go as far as any additional regulation, if any, at that lot. We talked about this a few weeks ago, and, uh, the Administrative Services Department and the Community Development Department both looked pretty hard to find documents, uh, related to the original intentions of that lot. They were able to find some documents all the way back to nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, Christie and the Community Development Department found a, a lot of stuff that talked about the assessments and how those formulas were, were put together, but there's not a lot of commentary in the record as it relates to the intention of what that lot was for. Uh, you know, we've come to call it the city parking lot, but from the couple of comments that I was able to find from the city administrator and from the bond attorney at the time, these were from some comments from nineteen eighty-one, it really looks to me like it was developed as the merchant's lot, and the city was gonna be allowed to use some spaces for general public parking. And so it really is just a question, I guess, of, of how you all want to interpret the use of that lot, whether long-term parking of commercial vehicles may have been the original intent of that lot, uh, or, or whether that's a, a burden now on, on the folks that are i- in the downtown area. We had talked to a few different merchants in the area, uh, Larry Kussel very much wants the lot to stay as it is. Traveling Computers made a comment that, uh, if the lot changes, that they'd be forced to put their commercial vehicles on the street someplace. Uh, Stitch's Embroidery was all for leaving the lot as it is, and the Meadowlark Book, um, ladies were, were very happy with the way the lot is being managed right now. So I, I guess really we're just here tonight to see if there's any direction, if you really do wanna make some changes, uh, right now, there is no regulation on that lot, uh, whether you wanna move forward with, with a plan. On page ten of the council packet, there's a few options lined out, we could do, you know, no commercial parking in that lot, we could do commercial parking by permit, we could limit, you know, overnight parking, we could limit it to one side of the lot. There really are a lot of options open to you, it just really depends on the direction that you as a council would like to go, and then we can find a way to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there a motion regarding the city-owned parking lot that the council would like to make at this time, or would you just?
Your honor, a question, if I could, does the city own the lot? Is the city entitled to the property?
Chief, did you come into that?
Your honor, it's my impression that the city does, because they did the assessments, and the assessments were collected by the city, and so I suspect that the city became the focal owner of, of that, because they collected that assessment.
Could we check and make sure we own the property?
Certainly.
Any other questions, any council might have?
Was, uh, your honor, um, was the intent originally for the, for the merchants on Main Street? Because Main Street is, has some had unique parking from the eighties with the, uh, parking meters being cut off and taken out, and, and we've encouraged people to, uh, park there versus, uh, uh, park somewhere else. The point that I'm getting at is, uh, I don't see that the commercial parking lot was ever in that idea. Um, cable television certainly wasn't the development in the seventies that it is now, but yet, uh, quarter of that area is used by commercial lots for either cable television or, uh, wireless, uh, communications. Was that, was that, uh, uh, you, do you remember that?
No.
So my, my point is, is I feel that that's, that's community property, and, and if it's community property, it should be used by the community and not as a industrial, uh, parking lot.
I think in the previous discussions, that's what's brought us to this point, um, is to see which direction the council wants to go at this time, if we wanna try to, um, uh, put some strings on who parks there, and, uh, if we wanna continue to pursue it, or if we just wanna back off and leave it, leave it the way it is.
Your honor.
Yes.
Couple of questions.
Councilman Christianson.
So how many complaints have we had regarding commercial parking in there? I'm not sure who can answer that.
Your honor, I don't know that I've received a single specific complaint about that. We, it came up in the discussions, particularly around the, uh, farmer's market discussion.
Sure.
About trying to find space in that lot, uh, if they wanna do the farmer's market there on Wednesdays.
I've lived here since, I think it's seventy-one, seventy-two, somewhere in there, uh, I, I think it's always been used, when it was dirt, I know it was used as a commercial lot for years, it's been that way. Uh, trucks parked in there a lot of the time. Uh, I think they made Martha Dale very rich lady, there was tractor trailers parked in there constantly. My, uh, point is that, uh, if there's no complaints about it, if, uh, the businesses are doing fine with that, and the people that have been assessed that, that fee for that lot are okay with them parking there, um... I'm okay with them continuing the way they are, because there's a lot of empty spaces in that lot. Thank you.
Would you like to make that in the motion?
Yes, your honor, I would.
Okay.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to, uh, uh, let's see, your honor, you have to allow the lot to be used as it currently is, uh, without any changes at this time.
Second.
It's been moved in second to leave the, uh, city parking lot, um, as is, with no changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, no.
Uh, mayor votes no, so what does that leave us?
Three, three.
The noes have it. The noes have it.
Fails.
Do we need a roll call vote, or do you?
I didn't hear, I only, I'm sorry, your honor, I only heard two votes.
I'm sorry.
Or I only heard two votes opposing the motion, were there three?
Yes.
Councilman Gard, Councilman Larson, Mayor Wartness.
Okay. So apparently we do wanna move forward, uh, with trying to come up with some regulations, uh, regarding the lot. Um, and I suppose that would be the direction that the council is giving to the staff to try to come up with some, um, directions regarding that parking lot.
Your honor.
Yeah.
My, I guess, in reading through this information, it, the most abundant, uh, abundantly clear thing is that there's an utter lack of information to be had regarding what's going on here, but I guess, in reading the comments, and also having talked to a few people in that area, it, you know, it seems to me like the businesses there were s- were initially allotted some, some space, with the remainder being the cities, you know, for public parking purposes, and I think, short of being able to determine, you know, how that is supposed to be broken down, I think we're kind of treading... we're kind of treading on thin water to exercise any, you know, impose anything on that property, because, I mean, if the agreement was that, you know, the city has 25 spaces down there for public parking, then we're really overstepping to impose something on that entire parking lot. And so, I guess that's why I wonder if we should leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fabian.
Your Honor.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I agree with Councilman Gard. First, we better find out if we really own it. We do. Did you find it?
I think as a practical reality, we do, you know, given the number of years that it's been in the, under the direction of the city and the taxes and whatnot.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Mrs. Lures just indicated that she is on the county website, and it is listed as city property.
Okay.
City of Reverton.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lures. We appreciate that clarity. And I don't disagree with what Councilman Fabian's suggesting, that those are the kind of things that we need to, before we do move forward, we do have a vote on what action we're going to take. But as I understand it, this is just to give the council direction, or giving the staff direction on which direction the council would like to go regarding this property. Is that not correct?
Your Honor, excuse me, that is my understanding. I have to plead a little ignorance. The direction I hear you giving is, let's move forward with doing something. And begging your pardon, we had that direction already. What something would you like to accomplish there? If we could get the end goal of what we're trying to accomplish, and that may be one of the reasons for the dearth of information in the report, Councilman, is that it's kind of hard to write a report when we're not sure what the end game is. So, if you could sort of, you know, enlighten me on what we're trying to accomplish, I'd be happy to find a way to make that happen.
Okay. I can't speak for the council, but I can speak for me. It just seems to me like if this is a community parking lot, that it is fine to be used for, as a commercial parking lot. If the city is receiving some fee for parking or something that could be worked out, to help defray the cost of the maintenance of the parking lot, the striping of it, the care and maintenance of it and whatnot, rather than just allowing commercial vehicles to park there at their whim, and then expecting the citizens to pick up the additional costs of upkeep and maintenance of the lot. That's the way that I'm looking at it.
Your Honor.
Any of the council, yes, Councilman Christensen.
The one thing I found out before, the city hasn't done a lot of work there. I do want to point out the gentleman in the audience, him and his organization are the ones that have striped it and maintained the lines and whatnot. I don't recall when that was, a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken. I apologize for not remembering your name. One time thing. And I do have a question for Rick Solers, while he's here. If, bringing up Councilman Fabian's point, if these businesses were assessed and there's some agreement there, I mean, what's the next step? I mean, if they were allotted X amount of spots?
Well, if there's a written agreement that so many spaces are allotted to, you know, individual businesses, then that can be binding on the city. But when I talked, there was discussion, but no actual written agreement.
I don't know.
That's the way I take it. And any agreement involving real property has to be in writing or it's void.
The question I had, the people that I talked to downtown, the amounts of money that were assessed were quite large for some folks. So, I'm sure there, I would, and there has to be something in writing. I don't know if I'd give that much money to anybody without something in writing. But there's a few of them that paid a large amount, and...
When was that due? When was that large amount? 1980s, 1990s?
Well, I...
20 years ago.
No, thereabouts.
Early 80s.
But they're still the property owners.
Your Honor? Of course.
Yes. And it's the, oh, okay. The one point I want to make is downtown. I mean, I encourage people to be downtown, wherever they park. I'm happy that people are using downtown. I would love to see it a lot busier. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Gard.
Your Honor, I personally paid the assessment on two different lots, the Overhead Door Building and Park in Fremont, Sixth and Fremont, excuse me. So, it hasn't been that long ago, and I can remember the amount that was paid. And so, with that said, things change, and usages change. And I think what we need to do is come up with a clear experience. And I don't think it needs to be terribly costly, but the property is going to need maintenance. And it does need to be clearly noted that we own the property, and not a guest who owns a property. And thank goodness Sandy can access the county website and do that for us. And so, we, everybody at this table knows we own it. If we didn't, we'd had this discussion years ago. And so, but the proper use of it comes always back down to the fact that do we state what we want to have happen there? And I think there has been some concerns voiced to me, that if that's a downtown parking lot, it sure is used by a lot of commercial vehicles. And so, if we, it's nice that we have a gentleman here that was willing, and I think that's commendable, organized the effort to restripe it. Eventually, it's going to need maintenance. And maybe it's had none, but eventually, it's going to have to have some. And so, we need to get in front of that ball and do it the correct way, instead of wait for the dilapidation of the property, and get the knowledge of who we want parking there and who we don't. I don't really want to restrict anybody from parking, but I think any city you go in has the capability of doing that, and letting people understand where they can park and where they can't park. And even if it comes down to absolutely no restrictions, then we ought to post that. And then we ought to be able to live with the fact that there is no restrictions, and anybody can park in that location. And we just need to get it moved off the table instead of a bunch of gray area all the time. And so, that's where I'm at. I just want it to be settled once and for all, the city parking, and this is what we're doing with it. I don't think that, if we took a look at that, I don't think that people would mind paying a parking fee. It's very convenient for those commercial users to pay a parking fee. Maybe they don't want to pay a parking fee. Most of us that paid for it didn't want to pay for it either. And so, just so we keep it all in scope, it was, I believe, $3,800 on Sixth and Fremont at the time, and it was a little over $4,600 for the Main Street property at Overhead Door. And we didn't want to pay those either. And so, that's where those properties come from, and somebody has paid for them, and not at their option. And from the notes, that was fun to read through those, those notes and those names and those people that were in the room, and to see who was opposed. It wasn't a clear-cut issue back then. And that's a good document to have. And I think one of the things that really helps transparency in government is if we come to the end of the road and do something, and make it what it, so that we can explain to somebody who can park and who can't. And if the clarity is anybody can park, I'm fine with that also. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments?
One thing, I'm...
Councilman Larson.
I'm not for anything goes down there. I'm thinking that it's parking for the merchants and their customers. It's not commercial parking. It's not for overnight Walmart vans and trailers, and without a specific boundary on what we allow parking there, why can't we have mobile homes there? Traders. It's a usage of property. I know it sounds absurd, but that's where you're headed.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
Question for Councilman Gard. Were you, do you recall, to the best of your recollection, what the presentation for the usage of the lot was at the time?
Sure. The usage of that lot was to enhance downtown parking, to allow people to do more shopping downtown. Commendable, commendable effort. And it's a good idea. The problem is that personally, I circle the block six times around the post office before I'll drive one block and park anywhere I want until a parking lot opens up. And so, I think that's a personal problem. And so, you know, and if we were in downtown Salt Lake, we'd be charging a lot of money to park in that parking lot, and people would park there and be more than glad to pay the amount and go. But we really don't have that problem here. We don't have a problem parking. And yet, the issue is, if we're going to maintain that property, we're not a good steward of the people's money if we don't realize that it's costing us something to own that piece of property. And whether it's striping, maintenance, pothole recovery, even abandoned vehicles. What do we pay to get a vehicle towed?
There actually is a state fund that would reimburse the cost to a municipality for towing vehicles that are abandoned, but typically, the property owner is stuck with that. It's about $75 to do that.
And so, you know, I don't think it comes without cost. And so, I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to say, yes, we welcome all overnight parking, and if it's commercial, we're going to put a $25 a year fee on it, and then it's done. And then you can make the determination if you want to park there, or if you want to park on the street, or if you want to get your own parking lot. Parking lots are expensive. That's why they're in ours.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
So, Councilman Gard's recollection actually fits exactly with two other of the people down there that I've had opportunity to speak with extensively about how they recall people who paid the assessment, the Martins and Howard Johnson, who's part of Inberg Miller Engineering. And oddly enough, you know, both of those entities actually have large yards as a part of their business that they've purchased themselves. And they, not only do they recall that the purpose of that lot was to improve shopping and parking for citizens, but that the use of it for commercial parking is kind of a slap in their face, because they have spent the money and maintained their own lot. And so, I guess, you know, to that end, it does, it does seem reasonable to expect people who are going to repetitively use that lot for a commercial purpose to pay, I don't think it needs to be excessive, but to pay something. I mean, $25 a year might be in the right neighborhood. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
If, regarding city parking, will this recommendation, whatever we come up with, will it affect all city parking, or all city-owned parking? There's other areas that we own. I mean, is it specifically that lot, or is it other lots?
I would think that it could be used as a model for other parking lots if we chose to do that. But we're just talking about the city parking lot itself right now. And that's...
Wouldn't it affect other parking lots?
That's what I'm saying. It could be used as a model if we chose to affect another parking lot that we might have. But right now, all we're talking about is just that.
Okay. So, the commercial could park in the other city parking lot?
Sure.
Okay.
We can chase them all over town, I suppose.
That's what I was just thinking. I've been envisioning what's going to happen.
And I'm sure that's what will happen, you know, if that's, but at any rate. Any other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
This is the problem with government. It's always overreaching. When you write a new ordinance, now the police don't, the 75 bucks a year is not going to cover their enforcement of going by and looking and seeing who's moved today and who has not moved today. And so, probably the most common thought is to back all the way off, but then no legislation gets us right where we're at. And so, somewhere along those two thought processes, and I don't think it needs to be, it's been there for 20-plus years. It doesn't have to be decided to not. But the thought process, and maybe, maybe instead of the police working on it, maybe it needs to be one of us council persons that will be willing to take a look at what enhancements could happen to that, what opportunities, if commercial wasn't there. If the commercial wasn't there, it would have been quite easily able to put the farmer's market in it. And so, all we would have had to do is simply say, you know, close the entrances, and the farmer's market can have that space. And so, I think there's some answers there that we don't just have to go without, and we don't have to write legislation to make it burdensome. But we need to do something to take the gray away from it, and say, if it's just as plain as everyone's welcome to park there, and we're, at this time, we own the property, we can change that anytime we want, whatever council wants to. But if we just come back to the fact that we're not going to, we're not going to have this argument again, and anybody can park there, I do think that the maintenance of the asphalt eventually is going to have to be replaced, and we already know who's going to pay for that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, does that give you enough direction, Chief?
It does. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number 12, Consideration of Miscellaneous Contract Repair Project Contract. Public Works Director Report. I'm not exactly sure where we're headed on this.
Your Honor, per the council's approval, we would prefer to table that item at a later date.
Okay.
Point of order. If we table it, do we have to bring it up next meeting?
You have to, Your Honor. You have to bring it up at the next meeting that you say is the next meeting, whether it's a special meeting, otherwise, it's a regular meeting.
So, would it be better, Your Honor, to not table it, but postpone it until we're ready to hear the evaluation of it, so we're not forced to put it right back on the table?
I, Your Honor, I believe that the concern is about the contract that needs to be dealt with. And so, postponing it means that it can be postponed indefinitely, which kills it. So, it would be my recommendation to either table it to a next, a special meeting, or the next regular meeting, which would be October 7. Or, you could certainly reconvene into executive session and discuss it further, and try to get it done tonight. It's up to you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Is this a new and separate contract?
Or consideration tonight? Your Honor, no, it is not.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Point of order, can we table an item until after executive session tonight and bring it off the table at the same meeting?
Absolutely.
I would like to table this item until after we have executive session later on.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table this item until after our executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Okay, Council Committee Reports and Council Members Roundtable. Councilman Smith, would you lead off?
We didn't have a Chamber of Commerce meeting this month, so I don't have any reports, so...
Councilman Larson?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Fabian?
I heard at Rotary today, I report that the Posn Perls fundraiser, I believe, put $60,000 in the bank for the animal shelter this year. They wanted to just send a big thank you to everybody who donated, helped set it up, attended, of course, the people who got out their checkbooks and supported the animal shelter in that way. Thank you very much for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilman Gard.
Your Honor, I had the opportunity to go to the rec board meeting at the new CATS building. And I would recommend everybody taking the opportunity to go down to the new children's library and participate. Those are amazing activities that they put together. And the local help that did the work, we were invited as a rec board to come down and have our meeting there. And the local help that did the work, um, we were invited as a rec board to come down and have our meeting there. And, um, we, uh, we got to see all the exhibits and they were amazing, uh, absolutely amazing. And the, the youth of Riverton are going to be greatly enhanced by the time they spend in that, that classroom uh, that's been put forth by a, a large group of volunteers. And I was just amazed at the, um, if you haven't gone to one of their open houses, you ought to go through the doors and, and have them show you what they've got. And it, it truly is, uh, amazing that, uh, that they've done that. The other thing that I have, um, I got a call today, um, from Mr. Beeba, or, um, Sanford, from, um, uh, Mr. Beefus. And, um, he was, he was concerned, and I think it's a good point. And I would like to, to ask if the city staff could take hold of that. Um, we have the water rights issue. And I know that Mr. Urbikite was, uh, doing his best to try to bundle up those water rights and give us some kind of idea of where we're headed with those water rights. There are pain in everybody's side. There's no way to get water to the citizens. Those bills are being assessed and they're having to pay them. I know that, uh, Bill is trying to get some idea of how to bundle those water rights up and get those into the city's, um, hands so that, um, we don't lose those water rights. It's real important to hold on to those water rights. The, the city of Laramie actually went out and bought an entire ranch for, what, two-point-eight million bucks or something? And now the water rights on that ranch are worth over a hundred million. Isn't that what they're telling us? And so we don't want to lose those water rights. But if we could get some kind of, um, conversation with the ditch companies to understand what they would like us to do and how we could go about changing ownership to those water rights to the city's, uh, possession instead of the individual's possession. And I, I think that there would be a mass, um, exodus of people turning those over to us. And we need to, we need to look and see if that's a good idea or a bad idea for the city to have.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman-
I, I signed my water rights over on, uh, West Park three or four years ago here in this office. I'm still paying the water, uh, tax on that property that cannot be irrigated because there's no ditch there and there's no water there. So, uh, and, uh, Mr. Urbikite had, uh, ideas that seemed at the time very conducive to expanding our, our ownership of that water through those. And we just literally signed them over. And, uh, I don't know where we are now. Because I'm still, I've still paid the property taxes on that water for the last, since I signed it over.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a response to that. I have sitting on my desk, water rights, or water assessments, property assessments from the county. And, um, Councilman Larson is correct in the fact that we had some people transfer those water rights and some that didn't. And that some would come in and say, I want you to pay these. And we'd pay them and there's some that haven't. So thank you for paying on behalf of the city of Riverton, Councilman Larson.
My pleasure.
We, uh, are in the process of working with Gary Hatley on the water rights issue. It is quite an extensive process with the state to do that. And so we are on it. We're working on it and fell in my lap. And, uh, I have, uh, I don't know if Mrs. Alors knows this, but I, I think she does. Connie Carr is helping on that because that's who Bill had helping him on the water rights. We're researching that material and we're just going to try to get it straightened out. It is quite a bit of money to the city. We're paying about seven to eight thousand dollars, seven to eight thousand dollars, so it's seventy-eight. Seven to eight thou- eight or ten thousand dollars per year on this property. So we would like to get it straightened out and get the process going through the state.
I think the RVID is my understanding that the city pays those water rights down there. But on the Leclerc side of the equation, we, we do not. And so that's something that's always been a bone of contention. I remember Bill and I talking about that. And I, my feeling was I didn't care which direction they went, but they should just, you know, um, and that was brought up by Craig Skaggs when Craig was on the, uh, council, uh, a number of years ago, so. Um, but water is invaluable. There's no question about it. And we need to do everything we can to protect the water rights for the city of Riverton. And, um, so I, I support that, anything you can do there.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard?
So you'll be coming back to us at a later date with a, an idea of if we want everyone to come in and bring their transfer over like, like Councilman Larson's done or, or however you would like us to do that. We'll, we'll get some future information, I would suppose, from you.
Um, Your Honor, yes, we're at the step right now, we're trying to compile the information of who has assigned those water rights or transferred those water rights and who has not. Because we have found that some that have not, and we're paying the taxes on that. So we would like to get that in an orderly manner.
So just to make that, that, uh, there are people out there that are remembering those arrangements and we would need to make some kind of public acknowledgement of what we would like them to do. And maybe we won't know that until we have a lengthy discussion with the ditch company of what we can do and can't do. And then, uh, see if they could, uh, orderly bring those in and, and get in line which ones will be paid and which ones won't and some, some information back. I also have received from, um, uh, Mrs. Jevney, uh, a list of, um, that I'll turn over to, to Kyle, I would suppose, or maybe Sandy, of, um, she writes me a letter that says she goes out on Sunday walks and, and, um, has noticed abandoned vehicles and they're growing around them. Um, she's, uh, as I talked to her, she said there was thirty. There's only twenty-one on this list. But she also goes on to, um, make the statement that she's already turned this letter into, to Rosie Albright. Rosie does wonderful work, but she doesn't think anything's happening on those. So if we could at least get a look at those and we probably get a report back that they've already been tagged and, and, but I'll give you that list of those, those cars. The other question that came up was, um, out of five-hundred-and-forty-five weed notices, were any citations issued?
Your Honor, um, rat, with weed issues rather than citations, those, uh, people that did not take care of their weeds, those were the ones that city crews went out and took care of. And then the owners were billed for that. And I think there were, I think Rosie said there were four or five is all. Most people did take care of, of their properties, but there are just a few that don't. And some of those are ones that it's kind of like that every year.
And did we have to lien any properties?
Um, I know of one that we have for sure.
And so, and so does the statute allow us to, to place a, a fine or citation for a fine? Or is that our only recourse is just to get the weeds cut and, uh, bill them for the cost of cutting the weeds?
That's what the ordinance says. And I'm not sure whether we can fine them other than just cutting the weeds and then billing them for them. Or if they don't pay that, then we do place a lien on the property.
Could we look at enhancing that, speeding that process up so that we get that done on a more timely basis? Instead of, uh, this time of year, it always comes up instead of in, uh, when weeds are growing?
Right, Your Honor, rather than the ten days?
Mm-hmm.
I imagine it would probably take an ordinance change then to do that.
We'd need to change the ordinance.
Because it does say ten days on that.
Okay. Rick, is that something that is a reality? Is, can we do that or should we leave those things alone?
Well, I think it sounds like it's a concern to, um, a portion of the council and the citizens. Um, I think the council ought to at least look at that ordinance and see if it's a reasonable time. But, um, Sandy's right, it would take an ordinance change to change that. Um, either the procedure or what the city's remedies are or time limits would have to be changed through an ordinance change.
And I guess the concerns that, that they're voicing to me is if there is no teeth to our, to our regulations, then why do we have them? And so, um, I guess that is a good concern. If, if abandoned vehicles don't get ticketed or, or, um, moved, then why do we have that, that ordinance? And let's either get rid of it or let's, let's maintain it. So, um, that's the question that's coming to me. Thank you.
Uh, city administrators report, please.
Your Honor, I have nothing other than the next regular meeting will be October seventh. And I hope, uh, Mr. Weaver is enjoying his educational experience in North Carolina. Wish I was there? Tonight?
Okay, uh, mayor's comments. Attended, um, a forum for the honor farm, um, property. Uh, the public hearing that we had there, which was very informative. I know there were several people, about forty, I think, were there. And, uh, that was very well done by, uh, Bridget Hill, uh, the director and, um, there was a certain amount of opposition that was brought up regarding, uh, that move, which really kind of surprised me. It's interesting that, uh, there are, uh, citizens that want the city to be able to, to do things on its behalf. And yet, uh, when we do bring something forward that can be a, a huge economic stimulus to our community by getting that land into the public sector and, and, um, getting it, uh, producing economically, um, well, we don't want to do it because it messes up our, uh, green space or agricultural land or, uh, Modelers Park or, or whatever. And, you know, those are important things. I'm not, uh, belittling them in any way. I worked very hard to help them get the Modelers Park. But, um, I think we're being very short-sighted if we, uh, allow that to come between the development of that property, which can mean so much to our community and in, increase our, our tax base. So that was an interesting, um, meeting. There's a forum that's, uh, available, um, here at the city hall. If there's anyone in the community that would like to, uh, write to, um, the State of Wyoming Board of Land Commissioners and make a public comment regarding this issue, I encourage them to do so. Um, and, uh, that forum is here at the city and is available to anyone that would, would like to have that. Um, I also attended the dedication of the Lander Civic Center, uh, over at Lander. And they are very proud of their building. It's a beautiful building that Mark Seinert, uh, put together. Um, and, uh, I, I wished we had a building that we could burn down so that we could build one like that. But, but we don't have, darn it. But it's, it's a beautiful building and, um, they're still doing, um, uh, the final stages of their fundraising. Uh, I would encourage the council to consider, um, on behalf of the city, to make a small donation to the city of Lander. I think it would help to, uh, build some, uh, friendship and, um, camaraderie between our two communities, I think, to help them a little bit. Uh, would leave it up to the council, what they felt would be a, a reasonable amount. Um, but, uh, or if we, but I, I personally think that it would be a good thing for us to do. Uh, attended the Paws and Pearls. I was delighted to hear that they raised sixty thousand dollars. That was a beautiful, uh, way that they dressed up the, the Fremont center there. It just, um, I've been in a lot of sales in there and I've never seen it looking so sharp. So it, it really was, they, they did a beautiful job on it. Um, Amy Stockton and Kent Moss and Pam Canham and that group, they just did an outstanding, um, job. Um, also saw Rain Fabian, uh, taking tickets at the doors, so. Uh, and they did get into my pocket a little bit. My wife, um, bid on a silent auction for a necklace and an earring set that she thought she had to have. So, uh, we invested a little bit there. Uh, also, uh, went to the open house on the Cats area. And I agree with Councilman Guard that that's a wonderful thing for our youth in town that was all put together, uh, pretty much by volunteer. Um, a lot of the projects and whatnot were constructed by, uh, men in our community. And it was really nicely done. A lot of, uh, volunteer donations and, and everything. They just did an outstanding job. Um, also, um, read in the Casper paper, uh, it was either this morning or yesterday morning, that in Jackson, they've got a beautification project going on. And I know we're talking about beautification here, where they're taking their electric panels, the big gray or green, uh, power, uh, boxes that they have. And they're putting all sorts of art, uh, on those boxes. So we've got to have the box okay, but it doesn't have to be olive drab or remind some of us of the, our army days. Um, and they're putting, um, beautiful, um, pictures on them and, and dressing up their community. I think they said they had, I don't know, eleven or fifteen of them that they're, they're dressing up. So getting ready for their hundredth centennial. So that's about all that I have. Appreciate everybody's help on all these issues. They're not easy and, uh, we don't all agree on what we should do. But at least we can come together and talk them out and, and try to move forward with what's in the best interest of our community. So I appreciate that. Um, I guess at this, um, time, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
And this would be for, get my verbiage out, seeing as how we have council here. Considering litigation, uh, to which our governing body is or may be a party in accordance with Wyoming statute sixteen-dash-four-dash-four-oh-five-A-I-I-I. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Okay, we are in executive-
Motion to reconvene into regular session?
Motion to reconvene, Your Honor?
Second.
Been moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the issue at hand?
Motion to remove, uh, item twelve from the table?
Second.
Been moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, the chair would now entertain, oh, we're not taking any action?
No, no action needs to be taken.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor?
Second.
Been moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.